It is now 10 o'clock. We have gotten through two pages and all of the Cranston residents that signed up to speak. So at this point, we are going to stop public comment and turn the debate to the Cranston School Committee. Prior to doing that, however, we would, as a school committee, again like to acknowledge and thank the Cranston Police Department for all of their assistance this evening. Specifically, we do want to acknowledge the Colonel Chief Palumbo, who was present and has been a great assistance. The Fire Marshal is also present. We thank the Fire Department for all of their help as well. Mr. Caciulli, would you like to just put on the record the conversation that was had with the members of the Attorney General's Office, which indicated that we could stop public comment at 10 o'clock?
Yes, the Attorney General's Office regarding the Open Meetings Act made it very clear that first of all, you don't even have to have public comment, but if you choose to do so, you can set whatever rules regarding the time of the speaking or the curfew, and you have your own bylaws and rules that you have a curfew at 11 o'clock, so it's reasonable in the Attorney General's mind that you put this type of curfew on the public speaker.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Mr. Lombardi?
Madam Chair, I would respectfully make a motion that this committee vote to appeal the decision.
Mr. Travis McCanty? Any discussion? Mr. Lombardi?
For purposes of this discussion, I had indicated that I was going to defer my comments to later in the evening, and I guess this is now later in the evening. When this all started, I think I went out long dissertation as to why I had voted to maintain the mural at that particular time. I said first, as an elected official, it was my understanding and my belief that the majority of my electorate believed that the mural should stay on the wall. Secondly, I had indicated that as a lawyer of 24 years, in my opinion, this was a winnable case before the district court. And third, I had indicated that it did not seem, you know, I was a practicing Catholic and I went into that. And when I went into the practicing Catholic part of it, little did I know that I would be punished in the opinion, and I was punished, and perhaps rightfully so, I don't know. I'll ask Mr. Kavanaugh after the meeting, but there were words, I think Mr. De Niro talked about being a lector, and I talked about being a member of Holy Apostles Church and always saying my rosary every day. And somehow Judge Legere took that and began to call what our meeting was a religious revival at that point. And then it took somebody smarter than me to point out that this case was not a case of religion, and that was Joe Kavanaugh. And I think Chairwoman Iyanasi said it best earlier when she says that we are now a lifetime friend, and it's been a pleasure to have met Joe Kavanaugh on this basis and to now call him part of my friendship. Joe pointed out very, and I had the privilege, you know, being a lawyer, you have the joy of watching two good lawyers in a discourse before the judge, and I saw Lynette Lavanger and I saw Joe Kavanaugh duke it out before Judge Legere in oral arguments. And Joe, rather calmly, and I thought rather succinctly, indicated to the court, Judge, this is not about a prayer, this is about a mural, a traditional relic that has been on the wall as a gift of what we learned to be the first graduating class that threw out in 1963. And forgive me, but I heard, forgive me for the slang, but I learned a hell of a lot more after that because Ms. Lavanger took my deposition for about six hours, and I learned a lot about the Jerry Zitos of the world and everything that they did. But, and nothing has changed my mind over the last few months, including Judge Legere's decision. I believe Joe is absolutely 100% correct that this is what the Van Orden case called a secular monument on the wall that happens to have a reference to a religious deity, and that's all it is. And I got into a debate with Ron Caciulli about this, who's my dear friend, and I said, Ron, you know, religion, this isn't religion, this isn't a prayer, and Joe was absolutely right. It's a traditional historic monument that has bothered no one for 58 years. And I think for that reason, and that reason alone, I think we have an opportunity to prevail. But that being said, even if we were to go down that religious path, and it seems that both sides have decided to take that religious path in this case. And I heard tonight about bloodletting and persecutions, atheism, Roger Williams, and why he came here and why he didn't come here, and all of that stuff. And still, if we went down religious grounds, we were the test case in Rhode Island in 1991. And for all the people on both sides of this that say it's clearly unconstitutional or it's clearly constitutional, your eyes are probably better than mine, ladies and gentlemen, because there's nothing clear about this case, okay? And I gave Joe a copy of something that a friend of mine gave. The test case, this is called the Supreme Court, "The Inside Story of the Struggle for Control of the United States Supreme Court." I happened to live the 1991 case because one of the lawyers for the Providence School Committee was involved in the Wiseman case, so I knew, I was intimately involved in the Wiseman case. And little did I know that the opinion, when it was first got, when the lawyers, when the judges first got together, the opinion in that case, which involved a prayer at a graduation ceremony, it involved you having to listen to me say a prayer to you, which is not this case. But in that case, five of the justices of the Supreme Court in a private conference ruled that it was constitutional. And Chief Judge Rehnquist, at that time, assigned the deciding vote to Justice Kennedy to render the decision. And Justice Kennedy took four months to render that decision. At the conclusion of four months, Justice Kennedy decided he had changed his mind. And that's how the vote went in Wiseman, five to four, to find that that prayer was unconstitutional. So if anybody sees this as a clear case, I submit to you that nine of the brightest minds in the United States differed on a school prayer case involving an actual prayer in front of an actual audience and subjecting those people to it. I submit to you, it is not a close case. As far as the last part, you know, and I see signs up here, we support Jessica Alquist. I support Jessica Alquist because she's brought the debate before us. I don't necessarily agree with Jessica Alquist, but I support what she has done as she has her right to do. And I support her being safe in her school, being protected in her school, and having the right to make her decisions the way she wants to. I fully support that. That being said, there's this monetary issue out there that everybody's grasping at, and Joe staggered a few people tonight by saying, if we go all the way to the Supreme Court, it might be $500,000. Well, what we're forgetting is, if we win, it'll be nothing. And so, so I say to you, I offer this, and I understand that I will be criticized for being fiscally irresponsible in making this decision. I am voting to appeal. I am voting to appeal, and I will put my money where my mouth is. Hang on. I will support and I will lead the school committee on any fundraising efforts to defend this appeal. And I am going to pledge the first $1,000 of my own money.
Mrs. Ruggieri? Please sit down and be quiet. Okay, would you like to leave? Okay, go ahead then, you can leave. Mrs. Ruggieri?
Mrs. Ruggieri, I am one of three people who voted to not enter into a lawsuit when this process began. My reasons were simple. I am responsible for every student and employee of the Cranston School Department. I am responsible to the taxpayers of Cranston who elected me to do my job. An important part of my job is to maintain fiscal responsibility without detriment to the quality of education we provide all of our students. This has not been easy during my almost four years on this board. Prior to my coming onto this board, we lost a lawsuit that cost us millions of dollars, and we are still trying to pay that money off. To any of you who believe that our budget has any money in it to fight a lawsuit, you are ignorant in the history and the ways of Cranston Public Schools. I did not believe, I did not believe that we could afford to spend money on something that was not related to improving the quality of education. That being said, I have sat back and listened and watched a lot of stories, newspapers, television, Facebook, Twitter, YouTube, and other social media, and I feel the need to respond to some of the inaccuracies that I have heard and read. First of all, neither Ms. Alquist or the ACLU came to us and said, if we just took down our Heavenly Father and amen, that they would not pursue any form of litigation with us. We had thought of changing the banner to alter the words, "Our Heavenly Father and amen," but in an article dated July 22nd, 2010, Mr. Brown from the ACLU stated, and I am quoting, that changing the wording may work, but it will take more than simply removing the first and last lines. Then, on July 24th, he presented in the Providence Journal a version of the banner rewritten and approved only by the ACLU. That would have meant completely altering the banner. That was not an option that we were looking at at that time. Secondly, we were not given the option to alter the banner during the presentation by the subcommittee. How it worked was the subcommittee met and came back to us with two options. We were given the option of leave the banner up and pursue the legal process that we have gone through, or take the banner down. Those were the only options that we were given. Thirdly, this whole thing started with a parent who attended some type of presentation in the auditorium and saw the banner. And instead of this person going to school administration, the school principal, or the school committee in order to work out some type of compromise, this person went straight to the ACLU. I truly believe we could have avoided almost two years of everyone's time and energy if she had just approached the school department. I want to clarify one other thing. This is not the first time that someone had an issue with this banner. Years ago, another person went to administration because they were uncomfortable about the banner and were able to work through it. And you don't know anything about it because it was never brought before a lawsuit or any type of litigious track. It was worked out between the parties. The threats that were made to Ms. Alquist that occurred by students in school were dealt with by the school administration. Those made outside of school were handled by the police. No formal complaints were filed by anyone from the Alquist family to school officials after the original complaint. The school department has never tolerated bullying and has made every effort to keep things on an even keel for all of our students during this process. I believe that certain members of the media have not given accurate portrayals of what has occurred during this whole process. As an elected official, I understand that people are going to be upset by decisions that are made, but the lack of respect, courtesy, and decent behavior that has been shown not only to Ms. Alquist, but to every member of this committee is truly disheartening. What I found is a lack of tolerance. I have taught my children that if they have something to say to someone or about someone, and they feel they can't say it to the person's face, then it probably shouldn't be said. The unfortunate aspect of our social media generation is that people believe that they can say whatever it is they feel like saying with no consequence. We have been threatened, called bleepin' bigots, damned to hell, told to place body parts up other body parts, had money thrown at us, been called names, and in general, been insulted by all groups interested in this issue. This is the one area that I think everyone pitched in equally. Ms. French threw money at us during one meeting. Mr. Young has repeatedly threatened us with not getting reelected, which maybe should concern us because he does know how to lose an election. Ms. Flittman has stated in a post on Facebook, "I can't imagine that there is anything dumber than the Cranston School Committee." A Mr. Polite from Arkansas called us a disgrace to America, cursed at us, and told others to be respectful and that he would take care of the spam and hate mail. The latest slew of emails sent to us via a request from the Freedom From Religion Foundation had information on it that was not accurate, and when two members of this committee contacted them to let them know that maybe they should be factual in their information when they're asking people to try and support someone, they didn't really care about the accuracy. They felt it was semantics. The group that I truly feel deserves an apology for all of the commentary, bad press, and distraction during this issue are the faculty and staff and students at Cranston West. They have tried over and over again to get back to work and focus on their jobs, educating all of our students, yet day after day, they have to put out fires and try to keep the peace, all the while dealing with newspaper articles, news shows, and the like, vilifying their character, their ability to do their job, and their student body. This does not even take into consideration the time that they have spent away from their jobs, removing protesters from the premises, working with the Cranston Police to patrol the parking lot so that nothing happens dismissal, having extra hands on deck at dismissal to make sure things are going smoothly, handling the students and their concerns. At one point, Principal Nolan had arranged for a group of students and teachers to speak to the press, to the Providence Journal. They were respectful in voicing their opinions and concerns, yet none of this was reported. The kids were upset that they could not be heard, and they had a right to be upset. The interesting thing is that there has been a group of people, and I see some of them at the top in the back of the room, who have been outside Cranston West at various times, holding signs in support of Ms. Alquist. Now, you don't know anything about this because nothing happened. It's not newsworthy because it was a peaceful demonstration. Nobody bothered them, they didn't bother anyone, but you would never hear anything about that. The school administration did ask them to leave school grounds because no protesters would be allowed on school property. As far as the group that is telling people to vote us out if we do not appeal, I don't know if you have a full understanding of all of the issues involved in being on a school committee. I have heard you tell us that you have signatures, but it takes money to appeal, money that we do not have, and money that while I've heard people say they're willing to give, this has been going on for two years, and we have not seen a dime from anyone saying, here is the money, now move forward. This is not an issue that our school district can handle right now. Our city is not going to be supportive of this. Not only will they not support us fiscally, they are actually going to be deducting this money from our school budget. So our students are going to suffer. This is not a job I get paid to do, but it is a job I take very seriously. I look at every aspect of every issue, then I make a decision. I would hope that anyone voting in the election would do the same. I do believe that something positive can come of this. The message of the banner that hadn't been seen or noticed by many is now something well-known. If even one person takes to heart the true meaning of this message, then that is a good thing. And if we can begin to educate our students and ourselves about how to treat each other with kindness and respect, then maybe that is a good thing too. This process has really made me question my own beliefs and has also shaken my faith in the basic goodness of human nature.
Mr. Travis McCanty?
Madam Chair, the hour is late, many of us are tired. I know the school committee is very tired of dealing with this issue for the last two years, and unfortunately, it's overshadowed a most critical issue, and that is the budgetary process of our school, or I should say, our district, and the children's education for 2012, 2013. I want to preface my remarks by saying that I respect, I sincerely respect the opinion of each of my colleagues on this board, and I will respect the decision of this board. I was, as you well know, one of the four who voted in favor of keeping the banner in place. And my colleague, Mr. Lombardi, as always, brings a legal perspective, a very elegant perspective to the issues that we deal with. He certainly makes a great deal of sense, he brings forward a legal argument to appeal, and I commend him for that, and I support him in that. However, ladies and gentlemen, my background is not of the legal profession, it's from education and its government. I am a traditionalist and hot, maybe it's because of my age and my generation. I have lived in this great city practically all my life with the exception of my military service. I've been proud to serve her as an educator and as an elected official. And I believe I know Cranston, I believe I know the people, and I certainly know her history. It's a city with a great deal of pride. It has a long history of traditions. It has a legacy unmatched anywhere in the state in terms of our educational accomplishments, our safe neighborhoods, our fine services, and our good government, just to mention a few. And I am offended, in fact, I'm sick and tired to hear about our city and our school department being depicted as an institution of prejudice, of hostility, and a lack of compassion. It is not in her nature, it is not in her tradition, and it is not part of her legacy. Whether you want to hear it or not, ladies and gentlemen, this country was built on Christian principles, and that's very important. And that is well documented. Whether you want to hear it or not, a diverse God is part of our culture, and the NBC poll recently proved that. It's part of our pledge, and it's part of the greatness of this nation, and don't forget that. However, this is not the argument here tonight. One of our students displayed her greatness. One of our students displayed her courage of her convictions, and I admire her for that. She succeeded in the goal, and that's commendable. However, ladies and gentlemen, I too have the courage of my convictions. And all I know is that that banner was placed there by the Class of 63 with the best of intentions, and it's complemented with words and values that every one of our students should acquire. That banner is not about prayer and is not establishing religion, it is symbolic, it's a story gift and display. It reflects the tradition of that time, it's a piece of our city's history, it is secular in nature, and it's not religious, and I believe it's worth fighting for.
If anyone had told me almost four years ago, when I first insanely maybe chose to run for school committee because I cared about school issues and my children's education, that I would be sitting here tonight before hundreds of people, dozens of police, a fire chief, and protection, I would have said you were all crazy, but yet here we are. So maybe I'm the crazy one. Of the seven school committee members, three of us voted to not go to court. This was not about the constitutionality of the banner or about church versus state. The actual wording of the resolution was not whether or not to take the banner down or leave it up, it was about whether or not we should spend money on a lawsuit. It was and continues to be an issue for me that is about education. Contrary to some unfortunate comments that have been made at past meetings, the Cranston School Committee does not have $133 million of disposable income. All 133 million of those dollars are earmarked for the education of our students, all 11,000 of them. There is not one dime of that budget that can or should ever be spent on anything other than education, which includes salaries and benefits for the people who educate our students. For anyone who would like to challenge this fact, I invite you to visit the Cranston Public Schools website and read the entire budget, and if you can find a spare $173,000 or half million dollars, I would like to know about it. As a member of the school committee, I am charged with the care and control of the education of our students. I have an obligation to them, their parents, and to you, the taxpayers of the city of Cranston. I do not care to pontificate on my faith or religion, that is between me, my family, my church, and most importantly, my God. If you want to vote me out because I am doing my job as an elected official, then you are free to do so. I don't know how the rest of the committee is going to vote, but I do wish that people would stop saying, you can't make it about the money, or you can fundraise the money. Where were all of you when I had to cast my vote to cut music for my children's education? Where were you when I had to tell my daughter that I had to cut funding for her gifted program? And if we appeal, where will all of you be?
Stop reading your script.
Excuse me, Mr. Young. Where will all of you be when we have to possibly close schools, lay off teachers because we spent money? Money meant for education on a lawsuit. Will you come with me to tell 11,000 children whose education will be ruined that it was all for the best? Maybe for all of you, it's not about the money, and for you, it doesn't have to be. But I was elected to make educational and financial decisions for the students and the taxpayers of the city, and I, unlike you, do not have that luxury.
I hope you will judge my comments, not with applause. I came here tonight, I have some notes here, I don't have a prepared speech because, thank you, that's better, because I figured that tonight was going to be filled with rhetoric on both sides, this issue. I hope everyone will remember that everyone is a winner and everyone is a loser here. The winner is our constitution having to be supported. The loser is that someone is going to leave here tonight upset with the outcome. The applause for one side or the other doesn't help our community. So please think about these issues as the school committee deliberates. From the start here, I never really saw this as a constitutional issue or a fiscal issue. The seven of us sitting here, along with the superintendent and the assistant superintendent, our main responsibility is to provide a supportive environment for our students, for their education. And that includes everyone, not the majority, even a minority of one, the smallest minority, which is what the purpose of the Constitution was set up, to protect everyone. And so, the legal decision that has been rendered by Judge Legere hasn't changed my view on whether this is a constitutional or a fiscal issue. It is still an issue that we have a one student, and actually more than have now come out, and are upset by something that we have hanging on the wall. Now, that may not sit well with many people in the room here, but we have many events in our history in which times have changed. Only recently, the state Capitol in South Carolina removed the Confederate flag that was hanging over their Capitol dome. Why? Because people were upset over the symbol and what it represented. What's important to remember tonight is that we're here to protect all of the students, not a banner, but the environment in which they are seeking their education. So, six months ago, I'm sorry, what is it, 12 months now? No, our vote was in March. I voted to remove the banner. I voted to remove the banner because we had students that were uncomfortable with I voted to remove the banner because we had students that were uncomfortable with it. I'm glad someone said that. We have one person that complained. We've actually had some people come up here and testify tonight that there were circumstances in which they were a student and weren't comfortable with the environment many, many years ago. It's very difficult to understand how another person thinks. There was a great film, 1962, just around the same time, To Kill a Mockingbird, and the advice of Atticus Finch to his children is you need to walk around in the shoes of the other person in order to understand how they think. And that's what's happening here. We have two sets, two groups of people who are having a very difficult time understanding how the other person feels. But our primary responsibility is to establish an environment in which all of our students can be supported in their education. And for that reason, I will be continuing to vote to remove the banner.
Mrs. McFarland.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to keep my comments brief, given the hour this evening and given the fact that I don't want to repeat what my colleagues have said. Although I was one of the four votes to actually fight the opportunity to have the banner remain for its historical significance to the school and to the class I graduated in 1963. I have many, I have mulled over this idea, I have tossed and turned over it, I have lost sleep over it. What I happened to do today was go to the Economic Progress Institute breakfast at Rose on the Batuxit where I saw many of my neighbors from Cranston, many of the people that I work with in the community. What I saw is, as you know, we've been named a distressed community. Our poverty has increased in Cranston and in our school systems. Our infrastructure needs work. Times have changed in not only our school, our city, our country. And given that, events, we can't keep the past, we can't stop the change from coming. We can't... Lots of things continue to change, and we will have to change with the world as it happens to go. Given that, you know what? Don't disrespect me. I didn't disrespect you. I sat here for three hours and listened to you every single time you've come to a meeting and spoken. This is what I don't like about this community. You have divided yourself in half. You should be ashamed of yourself. My job is to support the educational nature. That's what I serve for on the school committee. When I was on the city council, I supported the city as a whole. We don't have a half a million dollars to spend on fighting an issue that will continue to separate the city. I would much rather see us move on. You know what? You know what? I have clearly, I have clearly made my decision. I think it's unfair of you not to respect it. I think it's unfair of you not to understand my position. I have respected each and one of you as you have spoken to me, and I will let you know the constituency that I represent feels very comfortable with the decision that I've made. I've talked to my community. So based upon that, my vote will be not to appeal.
Mr. Lombardi, will you assume the chair?
Yes. Ms. Zionazi on the motion?
Yes. I also did not prepare anything for this evening, but I have taken notes and I have listened very intently on everyone and what they have said. And I have said all along that I think that the decision as to whether or not to support an appeal is a three-pronged decision to make. The first is we have to consider the cost to Cranston Public Schools to continue to be represented, and that is actually the easiest prong because we have great counsel in Joe Kavanaugh, and Joe Kavanaugh has graciously agreed to continue to represent Cranston Public Schools as far as we wish to take this appeal. So that was kind of an easy prong to get to. The second prong to get to is the likelihood of success of an appeal. And you know, as Mr. Lombardi said earlier, I think that there's really no answer as to the likelihood of success for either party here. I don't think there is a clear-cut issue. I think that the current makeup and composition of the Supreme Court would favor Cranston Public Schools' opinion here and would favor an appeal, but you have to keep in mind, it's a long shot that we get there. I mean, it's not a guarantee that the Supreme Court would take this decision. So the third thing that we'd have to consider, if we decided it was worth the gamble to try to get to the Supreme Court, is what the potential exposure to the district is. And tonight, we learned that Mr. Kavanaugh believes it's somewhere in the range of half a million dollars. And this is where the discussion becomes, in my opinion, disturbing, because the ACLU knows the fiscal situation that Cranston's in, and they have, they're using it to their advantage, in my opinion. They're trying to force our hands, and in a way, they have succeeded because you've already heard from four members of the school committee who have all identified finances as a reason behind their vote not to appeal. So you know, the ACLU is going to get what they want here, but it is solely because of the fiscal condition of the city of Cranston. Now listen, what can Cranston do with half a million dollars? Just so that the general public understands, what can the Cranston School Committee do with half a million dollars? We can fund the epic program for a year. We could fund, we could fund the elementary music program for a year. We could hire five math coaches to work on our math scores. We could do a lot, but the question becomes whether that half a million dollar gamble is worth sacrificing potential programs in Cranston. Now listen, I think that this entire process has been frustrating. I think it's frustrating to see the attention that has been paid on this and the lack of attention that has been paid upon the very important work that we do each and every day. And that work, over the past year, we have negotiated monumental concessions. We have increased our math scores, kneecap math scores at the middle school level. We have, all but one of our elementary schools are high-performing. We have implemented a new teacher evaluation tool. We have started work in science and math at the Dana Center. None of these, none of these real landmarking, landmark activities have been covered by the media, but the prayer bearing has. And in that, just to echo some of my colleagues' concerns, is what is wrong with today's media? Educating our youth is the most important thing we do on a daily basis, and we need to refocus the conversation on that. So at this time, without, without the $500,000 and the guarantee of any money, I cannot support the appeal at this time.
Any other discussion? There are none. Gail, you take the roll.
Yes is to appeal.
A yes vote is to appeal.
No is to appeal. Clarify, a yes vote is not to appeal, correct? Yes is to appeal.
Yes is to appeal.
I don't know then. Oh, yes, I'm sorry, yes. Correct, yes. Yes.
No.
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 Is there, is there a motion to reconvene to executive session?
So moved.
All in favor? Aye.